Because we don't really say, doesn't, the first sentence doesn't really break down what we're saying about what was sufficient for what. So, and John Brusher isn't here, but the discussion that we had when we first talked about these minutes was, the recollection was different from Mr. Brusher, myself, and I think Mr. Saad as well, than what ended up in the minutes. So, my suggestion is that we just break it up and say, "We reviewed and discussed each board member's position on special counsel, agreeing that points presented by the board members regarding the necessity for special counsel were sufficient, and then agreed that the answers provided in Mr." Or, I guess, I guess we don't even have to reference that, but just say that we agreed that Mr. Mondani's, or we all agreed that the, the scope of work and, or on the scope of work and the cost."
Um.
So, that's my suggestion. What do you, Jim, did you have a chance to go back and go through that?
Yeah, so the fundamental problem on this is that this meeting didn't get recorded, so we have no way of going back and reviewing it. I just think these, these changes are, are, make a difference to me, and that's why I objected before, and I think, I don't, I don't know how to deal with this, I guess.
Okay.
So, and at this point, I don't know how important it is.
I agree. I think that it made, it was more of a difference when we were...
But my, my view on this is, who prepared? Did you prepare?
Me.
He prepared them, I think you prepared them right after the meeting?
Yes.
So...
Because of the fact that I realized we didn't hit record on the meeting, so I was scrambling to make sure, you know, I took notes. I obviously sat through the meeting. No better time to take the, you know, do the minutes than directly after. You said, I mean, at this point, we're like six months in advance. I can't tell you what I had for lunch last week.
Yeah, no, I know. It's, it's, it's a unique situation. It just makes it seem like the board didn't look at what I provided, or, or basically authorized me to present what was in that letter to the select board, and I think it had some important information. And Susan issued another letter that wasn't as pointed, and I, I wanna, it makes it seem like I'm rogue, like I went and created this thing and you guys didn't accept it, that you, that you authorized her. And there, there are some, as you know, my email had some pretty scathing things in it, but they were true. It was based on truth. So, Billy's take on it is that we looked, we, we commented on the letter, and it wasn't like, okay, we're gonna create another letter. I was authorized by the board to do that, and that's what this connection is, but...
I, I, I think I was only on this meeting partially and from my car.
Yeah.
So, I'm not so sure I'm a great person to...
I think that there still is, although it's not in the minutes and it's an outside conversation.
Wait, wait a minute. I'm just noticing something here on the packet. The minutes that are labeled for October 22nd, 2024, June 28th, 2023 at the top, I think the wrong minutes got attached here, because looking at this, I was like, this is not what I remember. Maybe I'm in the wrong one.
You, you might be.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm in the wrong one.
Okay.
I apologize.
So...
Uh, yeah.
I think because, so the questions about authorization to speak, I think, are outside of the realm of the minutes. However, I, I do have my notes from the meeting, and I do believe, we did discuss Jim's email and what he wrote in there. I think, what, 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 go ahead, Billy.
I'm sorry. I wanted to say something, because now I have the right minutes pulled up, so it's coming back to me.
Okay.
We had Jim's email in hand when we did this meeting. When I did the minutes, we went through the, I think it was four items, one through four, and I think the issue came up at the end. There was some sort of generalized statement about approval of, or generalized agreement of the board, and I frankly remember it pertaining to the final question or two that's, that revolved around pricing or that sort of thing with, with attorney fees. It was like scope and price of work, and, and it was a fairly generic, the board agrees anything, it was essentially the board agrees that the, they would be similar in price and scope to KP law, correct? So, that's, that's my take on it, is I did it in order, doing it right after the meeting, and I think I just generalized point number three or four in his letter.
And that, okay, so that I agree with, if that's what the intent was. Like, I, I do agree with that. I do, I don't recall, and again, Mr. Brusher's not here, but he, when we discussed this the first time these came, came around, he had the same recollection as me that we voted, but it was not to accept the memo that Jim had drafted in its totality, but that we agreed with the scope and the cost part of it, but that the other two questions that, the, that focused around the specific reason why special counsel was viewed as necessary, and why is there a need for special counsel, we definitely went over Jim's, but we also went through, and I, I went through and did, I basically polled the board to go through and give their opinion. So, you know, I have Lisa's opinions, Jim's opinions, John Brusher's, Alisa's, and then, and then that's what I feel like we voted to, for Jim and I to go forward and present to the select board. So, so that's, and so however we can, I just wanted to make sure that the minutes reflected that it wasn't just Jim's email on his reasoning that we accepted, but it was, the board discussed all of everyone's reasons, and those were what Jim and I then went forward to the, to the select board with. And I believe, and again, it was so long ago, I believe, Jim, you jogged my memory that from that, then we drafted a letter that I was authorized to sign, and then Jim and I went and presented that to the select board. Is that right?
That's on my recollection. It was close to.
That's, that's how I remember it.
So, basically, what I'm getting at is I felt like I was hung out to dry, and I took, you authorized me in a previous meeting to prepare this, and I did, and it wasn't to, I guess, the chair's liking, and it, and she created something else and revised the minutes to reflect that.
No, that's not what happened, Jim. What happened was that I asked you to answer those questions. Billy had emailed you to answer those questions that Libby had asked for, and I asked you to send it to staff and myself to review so that we could get a response to the select board and town administration, and you went and emailed it directly to town administration and the select board, as though it was coming from the board, without the board vetting it, and there was, you're right, there was a lot of scathing things in there that I, that when we polled the board and everyone went through on their opinions, they did not all agree. The board as a whole did not carte blanche accept everything that you had said in your memo, and then from that, we crafted a memo that went from the board to town administration, and the board authorized you and I to speak at the select board. And then, we got word from town council that actually it should only be one representative that should speak at the select board, but you ignored that and went straight and started speaking again, and spoke multiple times when Brookmore asked you to stop speaking. So...
But that, that has nothing to do...
I'm just saying, I'm setting up, you're saying that I changed what happened, but I'm not. You just didn't, you did not wanna, you didn't want to...
It was just a...
The email you sent as a, as a, as a memo from the board, you skipped a step. It never should have gone. What we did was clean it up at the meeting here, vote, then correctly do the right procedure to the select board directly from our board.
I don't wanna go through, like, what, what should have happened, like, but we, you authorized me to do something.
No.
If, if it, but we can go back and look at those meeting, meeting minutes.
Okay.
And maybe I misinterpreted, but the letter came, I mean, the email came from Libby and was forwarded from Billy, and I responded. That's all I did. I didn't take it upon myself.
Okay.
Okay? That's all I was doing there. And this is about the, it totally, changing from what Billy recollected, which he, his was contemporaneous with what happened at the meeting, and then, two months later or something, and maybe you took accurate notes on it, and you had a different view on this, but I'm not gonna belabor it. Let's just vote on it, and, and I've made my objection known, and leave it up to the boards to decide.
Okay, so...
Do they do them individually then, or pull this one out?
No, I think, I think we can, if we can agree on this one, changing this one sentence, which I'll let Billy change it based on what you just said, your recollection, that it was the third and fourth point, that you just, however you said it, that's fine. It doesn't have to be...
My recollection was the generalized board statement was in regard to the third and fourth point, because I do remember too, every board member going through and providing their reasons for why they wanted town council.
Right.
And it didn't always line up with Jim's letter, so it wasn't like those were only the reasons, but everyone had similar reasons, I would say.
So, why don't we just add in then, we can talk about, why don't we just add in the words, "agreeing that the points presented regarding the need, the necessity for special counsel around cost and scope of work were sufficient." So, if you just add in cost and scope of work after, or in that, in that sentence, and then that...
Which sentence?
The, the first sentence of the last section before we, before the motion section. And then we can remove the reference to the, or we can remove the email, because we don't, we usually don't attach documents to, to minutes, and it's part of the record anyway.
Okay. As the, I just wanna point out, as the clerk of the board, do you have a say in this?
I have a recollection of the whole thing.
Maybe, maybe you should have to kick, position as the clerk. I'm just, I'm joking. Totally joking.
Okay, so, I guess then I, then we would say, then I would ask that we, someone makes a motion to approve all the minutes I listed with the October 22nd, with the amendment to that, as amended for the last section.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Add what you just said, right?
The, yeah, just those, just, yeah, just delineating that.
I'll second that.
Okay. And then I'll do a little call vote. So, Lisa?
Aye.
Alisa?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Jim?
Nay.
Okay, and myself, aye.
Was that, was that just for October 22nd?
I think that's for all of them. Okay.
Or if you'd like, can you, can you just record it as, I agreed with all the other minutes except that one?
We can do unanimous on all, four to one on, on, on October.
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, that, that was a general consensus.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, that makes sense. Okay. So, then, we're gonna move on to old business, which we are starting with application 2025-0011. Whitney M. Matthews, 43 Union Street, and attorney Arthur Reed is presenting for the applicant.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for the applicant, attorney Arthur Reed. As you know, this matter was before the board previously. I have on the call here today with me, my client, Matt Matthews. As you know, this involves the upward addition within the existing footprint, partially within the setback, the side yard setback, on the existing house of 43 Union Street. And at the last meeting, there was concern as to what methods were going to be used in connection with the construction, insofar as that might have any impact upon the elm tree on the adjacent lot at 43A Union Street. We have submitted a brief description prepared by my client, who is an experienced builder, as to how this project would be done. As we set forth in there, they will put construction fence along the left side of the existing brick walk to keep people off the lawn. They will go to the lumberyard each day to get the materials to be consumed that day, and go to the dump each day to dispose of the waste. No dumpster on the site, only trash cans. The house will be stripped of most of its contents, and therefore there will be the ability to do material storage within the house, and on the, on this lot between the existing walk, brick walk, and the house itself, and at the rear, in the yard, at the rear of the house, and also, we may use the garage on the adjacent lot for storage, but not the exterior of the adjacent lot. As my client points out, this is not a very large project, and the work should be manageable done in that fashion. But we would obviously agree to have that method of construction as an exhibit to the decision and a condition of the decision. Other than that, I don't think we have anything new to submit. We are committed to not doing anything that will involve potential damage to the tree, and specifically, as I mentioned already, not using the exterior portion of the adjacent lot that is outside the existing garage for any purpose in connection with the project. And with that, Mr. Matthews and I would be happy to answer questions and respond.
I have a question.
Not, not for Arthur, but maybe for Mr. Shampoo?
Um, what? Oh, I'm sorry.
I just, I had a question about, I mean, I, I know that we're not giving relief for, I know we're not giving, oh, sorry.
All right. Dave Shampoo, the chairman of the tree advisory committee. We've gone round and round with this project for quite a long time now. We're very concerned about, about the construction activities. Part and parcel to this, this project is removing that, that, that step on that side. We're, we're very concerned about that in, in regards of what, the damage that'll do to the root system, removing, removing that. That certainly isn't mentioned by Arthur in his presentation, but what concerns us in that regard is the removal of the steps is, and, and moving the, those steps out to the street, is, there's no mention of it, but it's certainly enough room to park a car. And if this is a long-term object of this whole thing, to, to provide off-street parking, that, that will do irreparable harm to the, to the elm that's there.
Yeah, that was, that was basically my question, because I know you wrote the letter saying, you know, no damage to the tree, blah, 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 but then when you look at the photos, and you look at where the tree is in relation to where that parking space would be, and then I'm not sure how the grade relates at the, at, you know, at the street to where this, how this parking would be. Would you need to put in retainage to keep the roots? But it looks like the roots are gonna be extended well beyond the, to where the parking would be. You know, the canopy touches the roof, so I...
Certainly, the roots are underneath those steps. I mean, the roots are everywhere there, and it, and it's, it's a surface-rooted tree. It's, it's...
It's sort of tricky, because we, we're not providing relief to add a parking space. That's not our...
I was just gonna say the same thing. Like, do they have, if they're creating a parking space and taking one away from street parking, don't they have to create two without, or get a waiver?
Oh, I don't know. I don't know. I mean, I know you need one for residents downtown, right?
I just, just to clarify, and Arthur, correct me if I'm wrong, applied for that relief. Have you?
I'm, I'm having a hard time hearing Billy.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Um, I, I wanted to say, correct me if I'm wrong, did you apply for relief for a parking space?
No, we did not.
Okay.
That, that's not part of this application, nor if, if, nor would it be before this board. If we were to apply for a curb cut, that's, that would be a matter that would be involved with the HDC and DPW, and potentially the planning board, but it wouldn't be a ZBA issue.
Okay, so just because it shows up on the HDC site plan doesn't mean it has all the approvals to put that...
It does not. It does not, and then, again, this is not the forum in which that would be discussed if we proceed with that, which we may not.
Well, as, as you can see from the photographs, I mean, it certainly, there's, there's room enough for a car, car to park there, and, you know, we're, we're proceeding on, on, on the, on the tack that this, this, this could be a potential problem in the long term.
Well, right, because that's what they've presented, so...
So, if they damaged the root system during construction, that, well, that, that won't necessarily be immediate showing on the tree. It could be down the road.
Long-term, long-term damage, you know, shows up, you know, it shows up three or four years next, so...
And the root system, we, we're pretty sure goes all the way through that.
The, the root system is to the, at least to the, to the drip line of the canopy.
Yeah.
Which is, we measured it, it's like 70 feet wide.
Well, it looks like it touches the roof of the house in this photo.
Yeah. And that's another concern too, with, is, you know, pruning that sort of thing. We don't wanna see the tree pruned by, by anybody, but, and we're not interested...
Through you, Madam Chair, just a question about the grade. So, if they were to put a parking spot where they're suggesting, I'm just curious, it just looks like it's a very steep...
Yeah.
And any, and if you're, and if you're...
And you can't dig, if you were to dig down to make it level and would have to retain it, you'd be cutting into the root system.
Correct. Absolutely.
Okay. Or, and/or, if you were to put pavers, you would, it would be a pretty steep incline that you'd be parking your car on before you'd actually level. I don't even know if you would level out, because the whole yard is pitched.
Yeah, as far as, as far as we're concerned, it's a really a no-go to put a parking space.
Would they have to come back to you to, to get approval for that space?
Well, they'd have to go through the DP, no, they wouldn't have to, but they'd have to go through the DPW, and...
Go through the DPW. You would get alerted, maybe.
And the DPW would ask us for our opinion.
Okay, well, that's good.
Yeah. So, it's not within our jurisdiction anyway, but it...
But it's, but the removal of, the removal of the, of the step is part of this project, is, is what I'm, I'm getting. Is, is, they're not, they're, obviously, what they're applying for is relief for the, the building extension, the dormers, or whatever they're doing on that side of the house, but also, part of their building permit application will be to remove the step.
Can I ask another question, Madam Chair? So, are you more concerned with the removal of those stairs, or the reconstruction of the new stairs? I mean, do, does that concern you, like, having, because maybe removal of those stairs, you know, they leave, they don't, they don't go below grade too far?
The new stairs are on the front of the house, on the sidewalk, so I, I don't even know if that's a goal, to tell you the truth.
Right, because the root system is probably...
Well, yeah, the root systems are...
Under where they might have to dig for.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's, that's our concern. And, and storing materials, I mean, construction fences are, you know, they, they go bye-bye sometimes.
I'm sure.
Sure.
So, it, I read the meeting... So, it, I read the meeting, the minutes, I guess, from your meeting, or the memo, and you suggested some language if we were to grant the waiver. I mean, there's some enforcement in that language, but how, how much enforcement is, would there really be if, if this, if we put that in there and it were violated? Do we know?
It's, 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 that's, that's an iffy, that's an iffy question.
Okay.
We, we will certainly be monitoring the, the project if it goes forward, which we hope it doesn't, but we prefer not to be traffic cop on this.
So, for instance, if Dale verifies that, that there has been damage, you know, what, what's the recourse?
Well, we could get a stop order on the project.
Yeah, but like you said, this could be two years down the road.
What about if we approved the addition in the back minus the change to the stairs?
That was my thought, too.
We're not asking for relief with regard to the change to the stairs. That's not a zoning issue, because they're not in any setback area.
But it's all tied to the tree, which I think is an important discussion to have, the health of that tree. So I know you're not, I mean, it's complicated, because you're not asking for relief for the stairs, but I, I think I would be very, I think everybody would be very distraught if that tree died because of this project and it, because of these stairs, so.
So would we.
So let's not move the stairs. And then we could all feel good that it's not going to, you know, that we're not going to potentially harm the tree. It's, it's, you know, the unknown.
Can I, just because it's not a zoning issue, we should still know the scope of the, scope of the work.
Yeah.
I mean, come on, right?
And there's still, there is a zoning issue, so we tie that in.
Well, yeah, we should do the total thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I feel like this is similar to what we were dealing with with eight bank, right? You have one thing, but it triggers review of the project.
Let me ask this quick question. I'm seeing, so they're, they want to create stairs on the front of the house. Is that on existing sidewalk? I'm not, is, are the new stairs proposed to go on a surface that is dirt or a sidewalk? I'm trying to look at the pictures here, sorry.
It's on dirt, it's, it's kind of within the bay window projection, so I think it's on their property.
It's on page six, you can kind of see.
So that area already has something. It's, it's not like the tree roots are in front of the house.
Well, they could be.
Yeah.
They could be below the, below grade.
Okay.
Yeah, because the bay, if you look at the site plan, the bay window, and then there's like vegetation in front of it.
Okay, got it.
Right, so your suggestion is if the stairs stayed, stayed on the side, then it wouldn't-
Yeah.
I mean, I know that there's another tree in the back, but I don't think it's got the importance of one of the elms.
And I think it's okay, anyway.
Anyway.
Yeah.
What do we, we had a bunch of letters. Why don't we, does anyone, if we are okay with questions for either Arthur or Mr. Shampoo, maybe we can move to hearing from the neighbors? Yeah. So, however, how many of you in the audience are here to speak on this? Oh, sure, sorry. How many of you in the audience are here to speak about this? Are you here to speak about this?
How many people?
How many people are here to speak on this?
Oh, are you all here to speak on this?
Okay, so-
Do all of you wish to speak?
I just, I'm Mary Ellen Peters.
Okay, so, yeah, if you can go to the, if you can go to the microphone and introduce yourself and just-
Sure. My name is Mary Ellen Peters. I live at forty-five Union, which abuts the Matthews property. This is the, I don't know, the fourth or the fifth go-around with this project where we have, it, it just is, it, it, we have to, you know, finalize this. This has just been inch by inch. They're trying to make this into a bigger project than what you're seeing now. Even the business about the, the garage approaching the HDC and asking to remove that, and that was denied, and now there's a tarp over it. It's in disrepair. I think they're just waiting for it to fall down. The root system is an issue to me. My house is on dirt. I don't have any foundation, so the roots are important to me, to keep my house up, you know, but the importance of saving the tree is most important. The tree behind his patio where they're going to be, I don't know whether they're going to plan on taking that, I believe it's a maple tree down, but that has drainage in the, in the area that is, you know, we get water all the time coming down from, you know, Orange Street. So this is just, as far as I'm concerned, and as far as the rest of our neighbors are concerned, there's, there's nobody who is, you know, approving of this. You know, everybody is, you know, unified and, and hoping that this doesn't happen, and hoping that we can finally say, this is it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The, the drainage we should think about, too, because I remember that, that was a big topic the first time that this came before us, about the, the water runoff, and if the trees aren't there and the roots aren't there, what, how that's impacted. Do you guys remember that?
From, from Orange Street.
From up, yeah.
I do remember.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
I, I just want to reiterate that I agree with Lisa in what she said. If the stairs stayed where they are, and even the arbor stays where it is, I mean, just removing it could be done in a fashion that's careful enough not to hurt the tree. But if the stairs stayed where they are, and the construction methods were to be what were listed, I, I would be willing to approve the addition. I don't think the addition going up on the back, this is just my opinion, isn't going to hurt the tree in the back. That's not a town tree, so we're really not speaking to that. But it just seems like the homeowner would really, you know, benefit and be able to get their project going if they would just leave the stairs where they are and protect the tree with some, you know, protective fencing during the course of construction on that back section going a story up. Just seems, I, I don't understand why the homeowner is taking the hard route on this if they really just want the addition on the back and just keep the stairs where they are, because everybody in the neighborhood is opposed to it, so he's not getting invited to any of the cookouts, I guess. But I would, I would approve it, you know, just throwing it out there with leaving the stairs as is, and, you know, protect, protecting the way it's suggested, protecting the area the way it's been suggested in the methods of construction, but leaving the stairs where they are.
Okay.
And definitely not turning that into a parking space. Like, no way. But again, I don't know if that's within our scope.
Well, I think we should just disapprove it and let them re, and let them reapply with, you know, the things that we want or don't want.
Why, we want to approve with conditions, is there a reason?
Well, because what, what they've presented is what they've presented. So we, we're going to have to redesign. I mean, I, we kind of do that a lot. We redesign their projects so they can squeeze it through. They know what we want now. Let them resubmit amended plans. I mean, rather than, go ahead.
My only suggestion there is keeping the stairs in one place versus the other. I don't know that that's materialistic, like a true change. If you were to deny this, they can't reapply for two years, so perhaps-
Yeah, I think we could represent the thing we brought.
Yeah, that, I'm just throwing caution out there.
Or, or continue it for them to come back with a new plan. I mean, one thing that I, I have some questions about, I mean, because there were better pictures, and maybe it's just because I had to print a packet, of the grade and stuff in the back? You know, I'm curious what happens back there, just relative to your concern with drainage. You know, is that something that we should? And, and what I have to re-acquaint myself on is, is the foundation changing? Doesn't look like it. It's really just upward, upward addition.
We're not proposing any change to the grade. Not proposing to change anything on the, on the, on the ground in the back of the house.
I think there's more roof area, Elisa, because it's a steeper pitch. It's like a really low sort of salt-boxy thing now, but, but I don't know. I just don't know what happens beyond, yeah, and two dormers, yeah. I don't know what happens beyond that. Is that flat that goes into that sort of triangular area? Is that where the tree is, in that triangle?
We could require drainage calculations.
Yeah, can we hear more from the neighbors?
And Madam Chair, while she's walking up to the mic, I just wanted to say that we do have two hands raised online.
Okay, we'll go to them after. Thank you.
Go ahead.
My name is Liz Coffin. I live at forty-seven Union Street, which is closer to Mary Ellen Peters. And I have been walking around the house, so I can tell you as much as I've found out from obs, just observation. But first, I wanted to bring to your attention the letter from Diane Coombs, because between our last meeting and this meeting, Diane Coombs passed away. And this is her last word, and she is the closest, was the closest neighbor, and she'd been there for, since nineteen seventy. She has the, she had the oldest neighborhood memory, an institutional memory. And since she was worked on almost every volunteer body that pertains to this, what she has to say really has tremendous import. You're getting, you're getting her last words, and her actual last words were to say, please give this their careful consideration towards understanding any, with any new knowledge that comes forth. So, we all miss her, and maybe it's worth your while to reread what she has to say, because I consider it most valuable. But I can also tell you, since she was immobilized, I became her, her legs, and I walked around, and she pointed out things that I should take a closer look at. And I've always been concerned about the grade. So I looked as close as I can to find out some of those answers. Now, we've never had the opportunity to speak to how this design actually fits to the site. So you're the only people who are going to know anything about that site and determine anything. And your determination has tremendous consequences for us, because we have no place else to go. We live there all the time. Mr. Matthews shows up for maybe eight weeks. And as a result, I don't think that he fully understands the portent of the changes in the water, the traffic, and the air pollution. So, to begin, it matters a great deal to me, the change of the elevation. And the reason being that all of the houses, from my house, which is the beginning of the street, all the way to the end of Union, all those houses on that left side of the road are under the embankment. They're part of the, and the embankment as a land formation influenced every single building that's there. And what they share in common was, in an effort to be accommodating to and as close to the embankment as possible, they all share a tremendously high front facade and with these high basements, and then one, two floors, two and a half floors. My house, which is dug truly into the base of the embankment, is four stories tall. It doesn't, none of this looks like that, because it's all folded into the land, and it's a very, very, it's only when you unfold it that you understand how tall and how high and what's going on with these houses. What they did do was they all put lower Ls or back extensions, and those were all to one, one floor height. So Mr. Matthews' house has just that formation, the very tall front primary house with the back L addition, which is lower. The reason that they wanted and kept it lower for, you know, from eighteen twenty on, was they all needed the airflow at the back. The reason they needed the airflow from the back is that you're getting the northeasterly storms hitting the embankment, and the water comes rushing back down into all of those basements. So they need as much light and as much air as they could get, and so they kept it that way. The other reason they needed it so high in the front has to do with the chimneys. The chimneys had to be high enough so that when the heating and the cooking, primarily the heating, goes up the chimney, it can, the smoke can get carried off across the top of the embankment if the wind's coming from the northeast. If it's coming from the south, you've got to have enough air movement to pull that away. Now, when you have all of those lower extensions on the back, you've got a sort of what I call a rip tide of air, which helped cool, dry out, and important for height, the land When you change that by elevating those backs, you have a, a significant, and I think a poor change. There has been some additions to the back, but none of them, I repeat, none of them, not one of them, goes up to the height of the primary house. So you would be, you're facing to make a decision to allow that high rise of the back elevation to go in and change the nature. You're setting a precedent for all the other houses on Union Street. And I think it's, you'll, we all rue it already. They need the light coming off the back. You need so, you need sunlight. The, the other thing is, you wanted to know about that back. The maple tree is doing a job of work. Not only is it sucking up the water drainage, but it's holding the land in, because forty-three Union takes a bite out of the back of the embankment, and it terraces. It's about, well, I, I didn't measure it, because I couldn't, couldn't, but visually it looks like it, it's a two-foot terrace. It's a small terrace, but that's enough for the maple tree's roots to go in laterally. The- The tree is not just an aesthetic phenomenon. The possible back elevation is not just an aesthetic decision. It's a change in the accommodation to our basic land formation. Not to mention the fact that it's the old historic district, and you're going to change the tone and character of the district. All the houses under the embankment are, they're a sort of a singular little group. They're set apart. I don't think you'll find any others quite like it. But they all function the same way. They all need that backlight, and they need that back air. I would just ask you not to permit such a high rise of that elevation. That's a quarter again as much of the house as is there now. And that little, this is a little house that is too tightly tucked in. There's not enough movement to do, move anything without a consequence. And while I don't, you don't need to deal with the consequences. Your decision is going to enable those consequences. We're the ones who are living with it. I can tell you that no, no house on Union Street in which there was a bay that, or projection forward onto the sidewalk, has a front facade door. They've all been side doors, which is the accommodation, because there's not enough space to put a landing and a regular safe set of stairs. So the idea that this should have, that this door change should have even been considered at all makes no sense to me. It doesn't happen anywhere else on the street, and it doesn't happen for a very good reason. The other thing about it is that he subdivided. So he has even less land as a basis for all of this construction movement or even recreational enjoyment than ever before. And this, the back patio, which is dug into the embankment with the maple tree holding up the terrace, that back embankment is surrounded by 41. Now, 41 sits at the side of 43, but it also goes up and around and then back. So it's a set of house with lawns that embraces the entire back of 43. Now, the gradient on that is the gradient of Flora Street. We've all gone up Flora. 41, you can see how much change of grade there is. And it's too tight to be moving around, the structure.
Okay. Thank you so much. That gives us a lot to think about. Did you say there were two more?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, can I just follow up with Mr. Shampoo? I know this wasn't within your purview, but what's your view of the role of the maple tree? Do you concur with?
The maple, I mean, it's not, it's not the, it's not a town tree, so it's not our purview.
Right, right. Just based on your knowledge.
But in terms of how that stabilizes that thing, it is immeasurable.
And I have a follow-up question, because since they're not doing any foundation work, does a tree have to be taken down because it's now going to be impacted by the new roof line? Is that the?
No.
You know, I haven't eyeballed that, but I, you know, it looks like there might be some pruning done on it.
And would you say that that's okay to do?
It's, I don't have any jurisdiction over what they're doing.
No, I know. I'm just thinking as a tree person, because obviously, everybody has overhanging limbs into their yard that they sometimes prune.
Yeah. I mean, pruning in itself is not, is not going to be detrimental.
Yeah. Right. And I just want to clarify that that tree does exist now in this area, and we're not changing the foundation, so it still has room to. Is that me making feedback? It still has room to exist afterwards.
But, but, let me just say that certainly the shadow of the, the shadow of the structure could have some impact on, on light and that sort of thing on the, it could be some detrimental.
Arthur, I saw Arthur spoke up when we were talking about cutting the second tree, the maple tree. Arthur, did you want to?
Yeah, there's no plan to cut the maple tree.
Okay. Let's, let's hear from the two people that are online, and then, and then we should move on to deliberation.
Lisa Parker, you're free to speak.
Hello. Sorry, I have a little frog in my throat. Good afternoon. My name is Lisa Parker. My family has owned the property at 41 Union for over 25 years. This is the very first that we've learned about this proposed project. We did not receive any notification about the application for the addition. Fortunately, one of our neighbors contacted us to let us know, because this project directly impacts our property, which is to the right of the Matthews' property. I noticed in the photos as I went through the packet, and also I wanted to say, Billy, thank you so much for getting all these to me late yesterday, so that I could participate today. But one of the things I noticed in the packet is regarding the profile of the proposed addition. I noticed in the photos that there really isn't a photo that shows the right-side profile of the house, but right next to that side of the house is a very, very large parking, bricked-in area. That is part, that is our property, that's attached to our house, that's right on the corner of Union and Flora. And so this addition that kind of creates this sort of block, big block on the house, will be fully visible from the street, front part of Union Street. I wanted to second all of the neighbors' opinions about these trees. These two trees that are on their property are some of the biggest, most glorious trees on Union Street, especially this end of Union Street. The other one that's a town tree is right in front of our house. And I can tell you, the drainage and water situation on any rainy day, it all falls right from Orange Street, right down into, in front of our house and the Matthews' house. So there is definitely concern about drainage and the elevation change that I think needs to be considered. I would also just say that, you know, part of the charm of Union Street are these trees, but also the, the size of these charming homes. They, the Matthews have a very charming cottage-style house. And as the neighbor, Ms. Coffin, was discussing, you know, there's a front-facing facade that's larger in our, our house that's right next door. You know, everything else, the profile, is just one story. I can't imagine if, if all of the homes on, on Union Street added a second addition to the back, I mean, especially in that particular area, the light and air and airflow that is necessary for all those trees, and just as you were saying, the, the land there, you know, during all of the many storms that happen, it's, it's very crucial to that area. So I, I, I really would hate to see a precedent being set to start allowing these second additions on top of these charming little, you know, charming homes. I think that if this goes forward, this, you know, this would be Exhibit A for the next owner of 41 Union Street, which is a much larger property, to put on a second addition in the back. And it would be sad to see such a change happen to such a charming little part of our, part of the street. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Emily Molden, you're free to speak.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Emily Molden. I am a member of the Towns Tree Advisory Committee, but I'm speaking on behalf of the Nantucket Land and Water Council. I think the redevelopment on this site is clearly challenging as a result of how undersized the lot is, as Ms. Coffin mentioned. And I'm sure you're all familiar that that was exacerbated years ago when the lot was divided through the state's 4181L pre-existing structures provision, which is obviously what somewhat complicates this even more as far as space goes. I think that the condition and the language in the condition that was provided by the Tree Advisory Committee would be important to include in any permit. I think as it was discussed, those conditions on construction and that criteria is kind of a last-ditch effort, but difficult to enforce and not necessarily going to ensure the long-term protection and health of the town tree. If the board is able to also condition the elements of the project that have been articulated by Mr. Shampoo as being particularly concerning, such as the removal of the side stairs, I think that that combined with the additional condition would be a much more effective way to try to ensure that protection. I think if the board chose to go the route with recommending a withdrawal and a resubmission of a new proposal, that would also accomplish the same. But I do think that if the board has the ability to both incorporate a condition about construction activities, as was suggested by the Tree Advisory Committee, and also condition those elements of the project, that that would be the best, the best bet forward for the tree. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Does anyone on the board have any questions for either members of the audience or Attorney Reed at this time? No. Okay. Is there anyone else who wanted to speak with a hand up? Sorry, Joe.
Well, there is a driveway on the plan, on the proposed plan.
Right. But it hasn't been applied for.
No, no, I'm just saying, so that's part of their submission for us to look at. And they are changing the stairways to the front, which I agree with this lady. I don't think that's a good idea either. I don't know.
Yeah, I know, it's hard, because I, you know, obviously, we're not here to weigh in on the HGC's job, and they approve them, but I don't, you know, my rationale for not agreeing is more about the health of the tree, which I think is our jurisdiction.
On the drainage, when you increase the roof, it adds additional drainage. Every other town I've worked on in Off Island, you have to submit drainage calculations, pre and post, and you have to mitigate. That's a really standard thing, well as the Newton Brookline. And it adds up, because it discharges the, you know, downspouts into something.
I have a general question. I don't know. I have a general question. Just some of these things that were talked about, would the HGC take into account, like this being the first structure? It had, there's a role of?
I would assume that they were given some of the same information. You guys didn't appear at the HGC? Well, you should have been. Oh.
We should not need, because I have a mortgage.
Yeah. Director Butters would have been notified.
Yes, but all the more, that has been the discussion about the garage. 43 Union on its own has never been properly quarantined.
Well, no, we have an approval here.
Yeah, we have an approval.
So it must have been.
Approval, but is that before?
Before, after what?
Yeah, I just, I need to state, you have an approval from the HGC on the screen. You know, whether or not someone has an issue with that approval, that's to be taken up with the HGC and appropriate boards. This is not the form.
Yeah. I don't really want to get into talking about, you know, adding on to the back of this building from a historic perspective isn't appropriate, because that's not really our jurisdiction.
It's not our jurisdiction. It's already been decided.
Yeah, so.
But, but I think we.
But Joe brings up some points, and, you know, that we should consider from, that we do have jurisdiction over.
Joe, did we, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
No, I think they should revise their plans.
Should we give them the opportunity to withdraw without prejudice?
Well, certainly, I think we should, we should have a plan. If this is where they want to stick and, and, you know, then that's fine. Then we'll vote today. If they're interested in revising the plan to have a plan that doesn't show the parking, keeps the stairs where they are, then we can continue, and they can come back with that plan.
Yeah, I don't think us giving seven or eight kind of major conditions is what we should be doing.
We should either continue or deny, depending on what they want to do.
So, Arthur, do you think that your client, do you want to take that opportunity to either continue and/or withdraw without prejudice and come back with a, with a plan that, given what, what you're hearing today, that would be better received by the board?
I will agree to continue until the next meeting. I, I, obviously, Mr. Matthews is on the call, and if he has any objection to that, he can unmute and speak. But I would be inclined to continue it. I'm not sure that we will be willing to make any change, but I, I think we might as well continue it to the next meeting until, and have a discussion among ourselves. I think that the matters that you're speaking about could be handled by conditions. And I, I'm not sure that there's really any, you know, the, to the extent there's anything in the HGC plan, like the driveway, that you want to prohibit or the moving of the stairs, you could do that by condition. Whether they agree to that condition or not is another question, but you could do all of that by condition on the existing submission, rather than requiring any additional plans or materials. As to the recommendations of the Tree Committee in Dave Shampoo's memo to the board, we agree with all of it, except the last sentence, in which it's suggested the certificate of occupancy be held up until the, basically, they've signed off that there's no damage to the tree. I think that goes beyond the scope, and I think that that, you know, of anything that the ZBA could do, and I think that that encroaches upon the jurisdiction of the Building Commissioner. I'd make that comment in any event.
But that doesn't mean we can't make the condition anyway, right?
So if there was a condition that, to not remove the stairs, which is one of the biggest, does it have to go back to HGC again?
Well, they would go back for revision, just to put the stairs back.
And to eliminate the parking, obviously. Because I don't think they'll be able to fit parking with the stairs on the side again.
Well, the tree would be right in the middle of the park.
Right.
I mean, where I am right now, I think, you know, our standard is, is it more detrimental? Is that right? And I think it is.
Yeah, I do, too.
Yeah. Agreed. Okay, so, Arthur, given that, so you're willing to continue, and the continuance is so you can speak with your client and come up with, hopefully, an alternative that is more palatable to the board?
At least come back to you at the next meeting and tell you where we are.
Okay. And I think the board was pretty clear on, or pretty clear with their comments about how they would vote if we voted today. Okay. All right. So, so the applicant is requesting to continue to next, the next meeting, which is, Billy, what, May?
We are meeting.
May 10?
May 8.
May 8.
Can I just clarify something? I just, you know, because I had made my comment early on in the discussion that if the stairs weren't moving, then I was comfortable with it. I just want to make sure that Arthur and Ms.
I just want to make sure that, um, Arthur and Mr. Matthews know that, um, you know, I think some other issues relative to, uh, drainage have been brought up, so I'm not so, I, you know, I wanted to clarify just my, my stance.
Okay. Um, so perhaps some information on drainage and drainage mitigation, uh, would be helpful at the next meeting. Um, would someone want to make the motion?
But may I say one thing, but don't base it on, don't base the drainage calculations on the stairs being moved, because I don't think we're all willing to approve anything that moves the stairs.
That wouldn't come into the drainage calculation.
Okay, okay.
It's just surface, surface area problem.
Okay, all right.
Okay, so Jim makes the motion to continue and Alisa seconds. Okay, so, um, let me call your name, Jim?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Okay, so we will talk about this with some new information hopefully on May 8th, and I appreciate everyone's time and comments, um, on this application. So next we can move to, uh, new business, which is applicant, sorry, oh, application 15 dash 25, 46 West Maya Comet LLC, uh, 46 West Maya Comet Road, and Attorney Arthur Reed is also presenting on this application as well. So Attorney Reed, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and I have with me, uh, Brian Madden, uh, our, uh, wetlands and, uh, and environmental specialist, who has worked on this project in connection with the filing before the Conservation Commission. Uh, what this involves is the movement of an existing house within the Morelands Management District, over which the ZBA now has jurisdiction, having been transferred to it from the Planning Board by the town meeting vote, uh, last year. To move the existing house, which is, um, on the south side of, uh, West Maya Comet, uh, road, uh, to the north side of the road, on land which is basically given the same address and treated with the, uh, with, with, uh, as, as being part of the same property, also owned by the client. No change in the footprint of the house, it's just going to be moved up from the existing site to the new site of about 175 feet to the north. Uh, no, uh, change, as I say, in, in the footprint, no change in the design of the house, it's already been approved, the move has been approved by the Conservation Commission. Uh, the matter is still, uh, being, um, uh, worked on, uh, by Brian Madden with, uh, Natural Heritage, because of, of the fact that this is mapped habitat and therefore any move within their jurisdiction, uh, requires them to sign off and to apply appropriate conditions, which they will be doing, which obviously, I think takes away a lot of what you would otherwise have to concern yourselves with in terms of impact upon the environment and the, uh, and the surrounding area. Uh, and, uh, they, they will be considering, are considering all of that in connection with what they're doing. Uh, we do propose to have a, uh, small deck remain on the site to the south of the road, uh, but other than that, there would be no structure on, uh, the side, onto the south of the road, which would be an appropriate condition of your decision. There's a history to this lot, it had been, there had been a question about the status of it by the fact that West Maya Comet Road cuts across it, and, uh, uh, whether that winds up with its being two separate lots, but the, the zoning decisions that have affected it, to make a long story short, have treated the whole thing as a single lot that, and there was an earlier proposal to move the house back, that wasn't done, uh, but it, the, uh, the way that it was handled was to treat the two parts of the property as, as a single lot, notwithstanding the fact that West Maya Comet Road, uh, runs across it. Um, the Conservation Commission decision, which, uh, approved the project, uh, had certain conditions, and those conditions would be, uh, appropriate to be in your decision as well, uh, including the fact that, and, uh, I saw the proposed conditions, which, which we can run through, that were in the staff report, uh, they did actually provide in there, not that the, uh, uh, Phil would necessarily have to come entirely from the site, but that any Phil brought in from the outside would require soil test for staff review, uh, and that will be reviewed by the Conservation Commission in the event that we do bring in Phil from the outside. Um, Brian obviously can address any questions that you have with regard to the, uh, conditions on the site. Um, all right, I would like to actually run through the conditions that are contained in the staff report now. Um, as to lot 26 remaining vacant and unbuildable, I'm not quite sure what that covenant would do, but it would, it certainly can be a condition of your decision that there be, that lot 26 remain vacant and unbuildable, with, that is as far as there being any dwelling on it. Uh, we do want to have the, uh, deck on it, uh, which, uh, was approved by the Conservation Commission as part of, uh, the submission to them. Uh, I'll let Brian speak.
Arthur, can I interrupt you for just a second, because I had the same question about the lot, the lot 26, and maybe I'm reading it wrong, but the variance decision that's in the packet?
Yep.
Uh, page, what page am I on? I don't know. Um, but the, so when they granted the variance relief requested in 94, the condition was that covenant was to be recorded at the Nantucket Registry of Deeds, stating that 26 will remain vacant and unbuildable.
Yeah.
And so that's, is that what we're referencing? Is that what you...
Yeah, that, 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 that's in there, I'm not sure that, the, what the covenant does and how the covenant would be enforced specifically, but it would be a, I think it's more effective as being a condition of the decision. That, 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 it not be, and again, we would, we would, uh, as, as I mentioned, want to preserve the right which the, um, Concom, um, approved for there to be a deck on the, on lot 26.
I, I had a question about that deck, um, because theoretically, are you allowed to put a, I mean, it's not, it's, it's a structure, it's an accessory structure, but can you put a deck on a vacant lot without a dwelling? Or is that another zoning?
Is that the same lot?
Oh, I thought they were...
Considered one lot, right?
Oh, are they considered one lot? Okay.
Madam Chair, may I?
Are they one lot?
That's what I said, I don't know.
Yes, Billy.
Um, as the MMD is a fairly, um, sensitive area, I think, you know, the applicant's request is reasonable to relocate to the other side of the road. The Concom approval, is that a requirement? Like, must it happen, Arthur? Or do they need a deck on that side of the road? Because my feeling is, if they're going to move it to the other side of the road to stay consistent with prior decisions, that area should be revegetated.
That was my next question too.
What was going to happen with that area? And I'm sure the Concom didn't ask for that deck, I'm sure the owner asked for it because they want to have a view platform on that lot. I mean, so, and then I was trying to see if may, are, are they treated as one lot, even though they're... I, I'm wondering if that's a variance.
I, I mean, I'd need to run that by some of my superiors, because my, you know, if you look at the definition of a lot in our zoning code, it ends at a street intersection, so I, I don't, I don't really know the answer to that. That being said, I do think, um, the MMD demands, you know, revegetation areas where, where the work is being abandoned.
Particularly when they're cutting so much on the other half of the lot to put the building there. I mean, obviously, I'm sure we all appreciate it moving because of erosion, I get that. So if, I think one of my questions was, the disturbed area that is disturbed now versus when the building is being relocated, are they akin to each other? Because, you know, in effect, we would want to have a positive, or, or at least a stasis where it's, they're, they're the same versus disturbing more area.
I think the, the 94 decision is 26 will remain vacant and unbuildable, so if we're moving, if we're moving the lot, from lot 26 to lot 24, 26 is going to remain vacant and unbuildable, so there's, how can you have a deck?
They have existing wood steps.
I mean, my view is if you want a, if you want a deck there, then you should keep the house there.
Yeah, I think it's a whole, they're two different, they're totally two different things, and I, I...
If it's an erosion issue, it's erosion.
Yeah, and I think that the MMD, the whole purpose is to protect and, and keep that land the way it was. So if we're, we're going to create more disturbance across the street, we want to minimize the disturbance of the lot that's being, for lack of a better word, abandoned. Um, so I'd like to see that entire lot revegetated, a walking path, sure, but I don't think we need a deck.
Yeah, I'm, I'm in agreement. It also seems like it's not even, shouldn't even be allowed via zoning.
Yeah, I, I, it just makes no sense to me, especially in this area.
I think, I think Brian has his hand up, and I'd like to have him speak to that issue.
Sure, I don't, I don't see that, but, okay, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I just lowered it. Hi, everyone, uh, Brian Madden from LEC Environmental Consultants. Uh, just to clarify some of the questions that were just recently asked, um, so, yeah, the proposed deck, uh, south of West Maya Comet Road, you can see it's overlapping within the existing footprint to, uh, the existing dwelling. Uh, what is proposed to remain are those, uh, narrow walking paths to access the deck and also a connection to an existing footpath to a set of beach stairs, um, that have been approved by Conservation. As part of the Conservation Approval for the House relocation, uh, the entire areas, existing developed areas outside of, um, the deck and the walking paths will all be revegetated and restored with Nantucket native species. Uh, that restoration footprint is about 15,000 square feet. Um, the proposed new disturbance across the street on the north side, uh, is about 19,243, just for everyone's knowledge.
May I just ask, am I reading this correctly? Is where the stairs down to the beach are, isn't there an existing wood platform that's just a little smaller than the proposed deck that they want to put in the middle of the property?
Mm-hmm.
So, isn't that enough?
Uh, yeah, for clarification. Yeah, so that, that is not necessarily a, a wood deck platform, it's just basically a landing, uh, for the top of the beach stairs.
What are the dimensions of it?
Uh, I don't have an exact measurement for you, but we could provide that.
What's the dimensions of the proposed deck in, floating in the middle of the property? Or, Arthur, if you know what it is, um, if anybody knows what it is, I'd be curious to know what the dimensions are.
I'd bet it's 15 by 15, or, I mean, I'm guessing that the little...
I would have to try to scale it off.
I think if you didn't...
Sixty by sixty.
Yeah, if you didn't have the walk, if you could get rid of the walking path to the deck and the deck, you'd have a lot more, you'd be able to reduce that disturbance.
You'd have to keep one walking path.
Yeah, no, I mean, but you wouldn't have the, you wouldn't have the curve off to the deck.
I was questioning why, I mean, I know they don't want to see their cars, I get it, but, you know, do they have to disturb 4,000 square feet more on the other side because they have this long driveway that goes to the way back? Couldn't they disturb a lot less vegetation by handling the driveway a different way? And that's the other thing, you know, I, I, again, I'd like to keep the, the, the area that had been disturbed, which was 15,000 square feet plus or minus the deck, and what's being disturbed on the other side of Maya Comet Road, the same.
Yeah, I agree with you there, I think you could do that.
They could park in front of the house.
Yeah.
Or just to the side there, you could park on the side, where the, next to the generator and the outdoor shower are.
Yeah. Yeah, rotate the house a little bit more, and maybe they could squeeze a little tighter on the back. I mean, I'm sure they're doing the house rotations for the view, rather than keeping it facing straight out.
Yeah, what was, so what on the, what's the existing disturbance right now?
Well, he said it was, the restoration was 15,000.
15 to 19.
Yeah, and then we're going to 19 to 43.
Yeah, and there's about 4,300 square feet that was previously altered with a septic leach field insulation on the north side of the road.
So, oh, so, so the net is 15,000 on the, on the north side?
No, the disturbance, the 19,000 figure excluded that septic footprint.
Oh, so, so it's really like 23,500?
Yeah, that's pre-existing, there's, there's no, um, aside from the new connection for septic lines, there's no proposed work activity to the, uh, leach field itself.
Right. But to be clear, Brian, that 4,300 isn't part of the 19.
Correct, yeah, we were just factoring in the new disturbance.
Okay, so the existing disturbance right now on the lot, on lot 26, where the house is, existing paths, all that is what?
It's a, yeah, it's a little over 15,000, yeah.
Okay, and then the, the, on, when it moves on to 24, proposed disturbed is 23 something? 23.5?
23, 500, yeah.
Not 19.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But 43, that already exists, 4,300 already exists.
Right, and of the 15K, um, how much is proposed to remain with the walking paths and the deck?
We'd have to provide those numbers, so, uh, and also for clarification, I believe the 15,000 on the south side is specific to the driveway and the house footprint. Um, there were prior disturbed areas that were replanted with native vegetation and around the foundation, uh, you can, um, so we can provide you with that previously disturbed footprint as well, for clarification?
Yeah, okay, it doesn't really show on the existing conditions plan where the vegetation comes up to relative to the house.
Yeah, so, I think if, I'd, I'd love to see a comparison of the, of the numbers so that we can make an educated decision on this, but I, I would, I think that, me personally, and given the MMD and the board's decisions in the past and what we've seen, um, from Planning Board when they made their decisions, a more even or equal, um, disturbance area would be better.
Yeah, or, or, or lessened.
Yeah, I mean, what I mean is, like, if we've got 15,000, we're, we don't want to jump up to 23.5, and that it does, and that doesn't include the deck and the new bigger, thicker walking paths on the other side.
You have to remember the 15, though, you would have to include the 4,300 in that, because that was already, so it is a delta of about 5,000.
Yeah.
Or 4,000, either way you look at it.
Mm-hmm.
Because the 4,300 on the other side of the road is already disturbed.
4,300 on the new lot.
Yeah, because the septic is already there.
Oh.
You can see it sort of on the wall. So it's a little plan here, they have like this little...
Yeah, yeah, no, I see it, I just, I, I just think, I don't, I'd like to shrink that with, I don't think, there's the deck that...
Yeah, I don't think the deck is...
And the thicker, bigger walking paths, and you made a good point about the driveway could be a lot, you know, you could...
Tighter.
Tighter and, and have less disturbance.
Mm-hmm. Um... What do you, could I ask a question about me? So when do you think you'll have any feedback from Misa?
Uh, we should have it within the next few weeks, couple weeks.
So you might have that by the time it comes back to us?
Uh, yeah, we would have it before the May 8th, yep.
Okay, and, um, Arthur, did, does anyone have any more questions? But I was going to ask Arthur if you had any more comments on the conditions that we might want to, we sort of went on.
Uh, yeah, let, let me go back to that.
Sorry.
Let's see, the, um, I would think you would want to refer to the Concom decision as well as to the, uh, HGC, as far as you referenced in item four is concerned. Um, yeah, I don't see, I'm, I'm not... Yeah, I don't see, I'm, I'm, on the, on paragraph ten, where you refer to a certificate of completion, I'm not sure what you're referring to, a certificate of completion issued by whom?
Compliance, probably, right?
I mean, there would be, obviously we'll get a certificate of compliance from the Concom.
Right.
I'm not sure, I mean, that's, that's a specific thing, that's a specific defined item. I'm not quite sure what certificate you're talking about. Certificate of occupancy, I don't know.
Who's, who's, oh, it's in the conditions here, this.
I think, Billy, were you referring to from, um, Concom or CO?
We were, I believe we were referring to a CO there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
We can look back, um, you know, I actually have them right here.
I didn't have anything else on the other conditions in there.
Yeah, I think in our other decisions, we had said, uh, issuance of a, issuance of a certificate of occupancy.
Yeah, and I know off the top of my head, one of the, one of the most recent, we definitely tied it back to the Concom approval, HDC approval, and CO, CEO.
Um.
Um, is there, is there, so the, the, and maybe this is what you were getting at, Lisa, kind of lost you. On the ground cover, uh, by the decks and all, is over by four hundred square feet? I mean, cannot be cured with this one?
Include, oh, you mean the.
See, they're non-conforming it, but, um, not just on the buildable. Uh, does that, does, my question make sense, Arthur? I don't.
I'm not quite sure what the question was.
What you're asking is to remove because, well, now it's more than four hundred square feet, isn't it?
I'm referring to Billy's, uh, staff report.
New decking square footage?
Because they exceed the maximum permitted ground cover?
Yeah.
That, and that, that applies to almost every, um, lot in the MMD, just everything I've looked at there is over the, everything is pre-existing non-conforming with respect to ground cover and also, um, impervious surfaces like decking and the like.
The, including the decks covered porches and impervious surfaces exceeds the four hundred square foot limit for the, for such.
Right.
And cannot be cured with this one?
Well, it's a pre-existing non-conforming condition, we're planning to just relocate the structure as it is.
Four hundred square feet is not very much.
Hmm?
The, how, how much, how many square feet is the house now?
Well, it says fifteen thirty-three, it's roughly what most of the houses out there are, about fifteen hundred square feet.
That's fine, I was just, I, I know, we always.
No, I understand.
Try to take the opportunity to correct.
Well, we certainly can do some correction by not allowing the deck on lot twenty-six.
Yeah.
No reason to add that.
I gotta say, I don't, the deck doesn't bother me. I mean, they're moving the house farther away, if they shorten the driveway, huh?
The deck that's just floating in the middle of the, on its own lot?
On water park land, like.
Yeah, but you can't, you, so, yeah. Okay, well, that's great.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I think that that, you can only think of it, Joe, as we'd be improving the violate, the, the overage on the, um, the decks and the blah, 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 blah.
Well, it's just really such an odd too, but they also have that platform on top of the stairs that is pre-existing, I think that's sufficient.
Yeah.
So.
Emily Molden has her hand up, guys.
My view on this, on what I'm getting at is, you know, if there's a setback, a pre-existing setback condition, and in this case, we're moving the house, why can't you cure some of these things? That's all, that's.
I think we'll be able to make better decisions.
After what you're saying, it's pre-existing.
Yeah.
And then the situation is that.
Well, let's see what they come up with.
I think it would be, um, when we had these in the past, um, I think we had like a pretty good list or table of this is what's existing, this is what we're proposing, decks that, like, just having it all laid out and up numerically so we can see what exactly it is that we're talking about would be helpful. Um, Emily Molden has her hand up, I'd like to hear from her, and then if, um, see, seeing that we're going to get the MISA information hopefully and get more, uh, information on the numbers, I think we could continue this one. But, um, Emily, let's hear what you have to say.
Thanks so much, Madam Chair, Emily Molden for the Nantucket Land and Water Council. Um, just a few comments to add to your discussion. We don't have a problem with the proposal to relocate the house, uh, to address the accelerating erosion on the South Shore. Um, I did want to support the staff recommendation to revegetate the existing house site. I think that's obviously important, and, um, I think it would be very helpful if the applicants could provide a restoration or revegetation plan for that while the public hearing is still open, if there's time to do that now. Um, and I presume that that could be conditioned to all be native species, certainly. Um, and then I definitely support looking into alternatives for the driveway at the new site. I agree with the board members that I think there are some alternatives there that would, would require less vegetation disturbance to the north. Um, and then generally I'm supportive with, uh, the board's other concerns and, um, questions that have been raised. Thanks very much.
Which, by the way, the driving, the driveway area being lessened also goes without saying relocating the proposed location for the shed.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Um, I think a restoration and revegetation plan.
Great idea.
Is a great idea, and I would love to see that, and I would, uh, definitely, uh, hope the applicant would focus on only native species.
Yeah, I agree.
As I think we've required in the past.
Yeah, but I think Brian Madden confirmed that it's going to be native.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so should I make a motion to, oh, are, are we not there yet?
Um, I think we could make, um, unless there's any more comments, I don't see any hands up. Um, unless there's any more comments, I think we could make, take a motion to close the public, oh, no, we don't close the public hearing, sorry. Take a motion to continue to May eighth, um, so that, for the applicant to provide more information. Okay, so, uh, Jim made the motion, Alisa seconded, we'll go roll call vote, Jim.
Aye.
Alisa?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Okay, so we'll come back, um, hopefully for some more information on May eighth.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Okay. Okay, okay, so do we have, um?
George?
Mr. Pucci is online.
Um, and do we have John Brusher?
No, John is not online. I know, uh, Madam Chair, he had been texting me, he's dealing with a work-related matter that he's been trying to get over here, but I don't know that he's going to be able to make it.
Okay. Okay.
So can we vote without him?
Um, well, there's four.
How will that look?
Uh, let's see. He can zoom in, okay. Okay. I don't think, okay.
Can we give it a minute for him to log on and, um?
Me too.
Yeah, let's do that. And Jim, or, or, Joe, are you going to stay with this? You're welcome to.
Yeah, I'll stay.
Fun, good, you'd have another opinion.
It's a lot of fun.
Is it?
Okay, so I think we'll just take a quick, we'll take a quick recess, um, while we wait for one of our board members to get in. Uh, but still, still, I wouldn't know. Anyway, you know, so. I think we'll get the numbers and we'll, we'll see what it.
Very hungry.
Billy, John's on. So, let's see. Oh, crap. Okay. Okay, John's on but may have to jump off, so let's try to get this going.
Let's quickly, okay.
Um, are we, are we, we're in open session?
Yes.
Okay.
But the public hearing is closed, so this is board discussion and town council.
Oh, here we go. Okay, so we're continuing board deliberation and review of the draft decision. The public hearing has officially closed, um, and we are required to render a decision on surfside crossing by April thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five, which is Sunday, so we have to file it Monday.
And just a quick, based on discussions of the finished date ending on a weekend, it's always the following day. So I did post a meeting for Monday, we have it there, just, just a heads up to all of you if needed.
Okay, so did everyone have a chance, well, I, I, everyone had a chance to read and review and comment on the draft decision, I, um, and Billy, you sent us, uh, the, with the revisions, um, accepted yesterday. And, um, George, do, so I guess, does anyone, George, do you want to take the floor and just talk about the final one that was published yesterday?
Uh, sure.
On the current last night?
Uh, sure, uh, good afternoon, it's George Pucci from KP Law. Um, I did, uh, draft an initial draft, um, I received comments from individual board members, and then I incorporated those into a, a proposed, you know, final draft for your review and public deliberations. Um, I think that you, you have that, and that would be what was posted that, that you're referring to. Um, three issues were identified during deliberations that I tried to include in, um, uh, the decision was, uh, the stormwater management, uh, system and the water quality issue, uh, the single means of access and egress and lack of cooperation from the applicant to consider, uh, potential revisions to the plan. And so that, that was what I, um, focused on and provided in your draft. Um, I knew that, that, um, you know, you, I, I believe that, you know, one member was unable to weigh in and, and, because it was a very tight timeframe, um, in terms of commenting on that, uh, first draft. So I know that, uh, Jim would have further, um, additions, um, that he, he wants to see go into that decision. The only thing I would say to you, um, in terms of adding to the decision, uh, beyond what's included in there now, is, um, you know, we don't want to talk about this in open session, but you're going to be clearly facing litigation. The applicant has made it very clear that they intend to proceed directly to HAC when you issue the denial decision. Uh, so we are facing for sure, uh, the prospect of litigation. And in the context of litigation, you know, and I don't mind saying this in public because it's pretty much black letter law for anybody who's tried a case, is you, you try to focus the issues of most importance. And, you know, if it can be, you know, no more than three themes, you know, that the adage is three themes, no more. No, so you want to focus on the issues that are of great importance and that you think that, you know, were the crux of why you entered into the decision that you did. Uh, you do have expert witnesses who testified to you on those water quality issues and the inadequacy of the stormwater management system as proposed. So without getting into litigation strategy, I would just tell you from a general perspective of a trial lawyer, um, I would recommend that you focus on the issues of most importance to you in this decision. Uh, and that, that would be the decision that you, uh, render, both taking into account the fact that you conducted this full hearing, the board was unanimous in its consensus on the initial deliberations as to what you thought were the issues that compelled denial of the permit. That's what I focused on in the denial decision, and, you know, from here, again, with litigation, uh, you're facing litigation, you want to focus on the issues of most importance as opposed to, you know, giving the appearance that you're throwing a whole bunch of issues, you know, out there and, and then things can get lost that way about what's important and what is, uh, less important or, you know, you have less of a grounds to, uh, defend. So having said that, uh, you know, I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. I did provide, uh, the, the, the draft that you posted, I provided it again to Billy this morning in Word format in case anybody wanted to put any, you know, revisions right directly onto the document, which then can be another final, but, you know, you do have a proposed final before you, uh, today for your deliberations.
Um, that, I think what you're, I defer to you, um, can I speak?
Mm-hmm.
George, uh, with regard to litigation strategy and what works, but I think what he's referring to are my comments, which I think there, there were ten issues specifically addressed and, um, I don't, I mean, I, I, I don't know how to deal with litigation strategy, but they haven't actually appealed it, so I, I don't know if we can go into executive session and discuss these, but I just, to me, in a way, I, I would want to draft this decision in a vacuum of not knowing whether they're going to appeal it or not. And that, that was my approach, and to give more reasons rather than less, but. And that's the awkwardness of like each of us providing con, comments without the others weighing in, so how do we, how do we deal with that, I guess?
I, I have a suggestion on that, that, that was why we set this up the way we did. We, and I want to be clear for the public that there was no rolling meeting going on behind the scenes. All there was, was an initial draft, drafted by council, provided under the attorney-client privilege. Individual board members, three of them, Lisa, Elise, and John provided, and, and Susan also weighed in the, the, on, on the draft as well. There were limited comments from those members. I incorporated those in without communicating with one another, only through Billy to me. And then I incorporated those into this proposed final draft and then, you know, your comments, which, which I did see came after. And I'm not talking about the merits or demerits of the points you raise, all I'm saying is, you know, I would recommend you focus on the issues that compelled the denial of the permit. So, but to answer your question about how the, you know, this can be discussed with the board, that's why you now have the deliberations. So you're free to have as full of a, full and free of a discussion about what you think is inadequate in the draft as proposed, you know, and the board is free to discuss it. If, if the board votes as a majority to, to make revisions to the permit, you, you have time to do that and you can issue, you know, the new final perm, the new final denial decision after you have that further discussion. So that, that was, and again, you know, nobody likes the tight timeframe that we're working under here, but under that tight timeframe, this was the best we could do to get it before you so that at least you could be talking to each other in the public, publicly notice deliberations about, you know, what, what you want in the denial decision now that it's in the final draft form.
Okay, thank you, wait, hold on, hold on. John Brescher has his hand up and he, he may have to jump off because he is having a work issue.
I've got a, a real life nightmare going on, thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. Perhaps through you to, to George. George, I mean, we've taken in a lot of testimony on this, on this matter. I mean, a, years' worth of testimony. That's all included in the public record, correct? So we don't have to reference every single thing that has happened from the, from the time that the applicant first, or, or every slight that the applicant had ever since the first, their first hearing. It's all, it's all included in there. I, my assumption is that we want to, to have the best, and by the way, I think the board is generally aligned on, on the, the denial aspect of this, but we want to have the best defensible decision in front of HAC, knowing that the, the record backs us up without it being in the decision, because we have, you know, sort of six, six years of examples of some of the, some of the actions that the developer took, some of the other i- issues that there may be. But we don't have to necessarily spell those out in the decision because we know it's in the public record. Is that, and, and so the, so the decision really should be sort of like, sort of the Joe Friday of a, of a decision in that we want to just have the facts, please, as they relate to the reasons why we're denying it and, and the reasons why HAC would care that we're denying it.
So that's exactly right. The, the entire record will be available and any appeal to HAC is a de novo hearing, which means it's all based on new evidence. And the decision itself should be focused on the grounds that the board found compelling to deny the project. And those were the issues that are in the draft. So yes, there's the opportunity and the ability to introduce whatever you want in the HAC proceedings. I can tell you, there's not a lot of, you, you, you won't get very far sort of focusing on issues that are outside the technical issues that are before you, issues of local concern. You know, the technical issues concerning the stormwater management system, the access and egress to the site, those types of issues that are based on actual evidence, those will be the focus of the hearing. What, you know, characterizing who did what, when really is not going to be of a lot of relevance on that proceeding. And again, you know, my focus, both with the perspective that you are facing litigation, but also as Jim had pointed out, really, your focus is, okay, we're a permitting board, we heard this application, we find reasons that compel us to deny that permit, and you want to spell out the reasons why you denied it as opposed to, you know, throwing everything possible against the wall and seeing what would stick. You, you had these compelling reasons why you wanted to deny the permit and that's the focus of the decision.
And, and, and thank you, George, I, I didn't get a chance to, I, I know I said this in my email, but I, I think this is a very well-written decision. Thank, thank you for putting in all the time and effort onto this one.
My, my only question was, why does this become public if it hasn't been voted on? Why did it go, end up in the current if we haven't voted on it?
It's got it posted online.
By who?
I was told to post it by George, the draft, because you all would be discussing it here in a public session.
Right. And we all had had a chance to review it and we had a deadline.
Yeah, I, I don't know about the current, I don't know about the current, but I, I definitely, you know, it, any document that you're going to discuss in an open session, which this is, open public deliberations, people can't comment on it, but they are open to the public, they were posted pursuant to the open meeting law. You have a document that you're discussing, that becomes, that is a public document at that point. I, I, I mean, I think it's amazing how fast.
I thought you would post it on the current, I was like, well, that seems kind of strange.
No, I just had someone reach out to me last night being like, I'm reading your decision and I was like, well, our, the draft decision, and they were like, it's on the current, so that's.
Okay.
What is, what is the current?
So that the public had a chance to look at it before we publicly discussed it.
The current reached out to me and the draft was posted, so I shared a copy with Jason Grazia. Yeah, yeah, it's fine.
Can we get back to this discussion?
Yeah.
On this. We spent a lot of time on this and, you know, it's interesting that I, I know my comments came in late, but it's interesting, none of them are being incorporated and I had some grammatical changes too.
But it was after it was already posted, Jim, so it was already posted for public discussion, we couldn't change it, the deadline.
Okay.
Oh, so we can't change it?
There is.
No, 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 no.
That's not true. Like, we can't change it?
No, that is not what I said.
I was asking the question.
That is not what I said, I'm saying the, the document that was published yesterday, based on a timeline.
Yep.
Was done.
We never got a timeline, did we have a deadline?
Yes, he had a deadline, we were supposed to have comments in.
By yes.
Not yesterday, the day before yesterday.
This is all happening so quick that I had reached out to everyone, we got the draft on Monday, I said, have your comments to me by the end of the day tomorrow. I mean, I.
There was a deadline to get us a draft on Friday, was there not? And not, how about that deadline?
Well, let's just.
George, what happened on the deadline for Friday, delivering the initial draft? Yeah. This isn't material, my point is, the draft was delayed that we got, so I missed it by.
Let's just go through your points and see what we should incorporate, isn't that what we should do?
So.
I think, I think it's clear they don't want any of them.
Who's they?
Who's they?
John Brescher, I, I.
Well, John, nobody's seen your email, Jim, because we did not.
We didn't share.
Comments were not shared.
We have no idea what your email said, so why don't we just go through your comments?
Right. What was that?
Shared to whom? I'm sorry, I'm, I need to interject for a minute.
Why is pressure? Why, John, can you repeat your comments and?
Sorry, say, I'm sorry, say that again, Jim?
You haven't seen my comments?
No, no, I haven't, I haven't seen your comments at all, I have no, I have no idea what they are.
So what is your point?
What's, what's my, what's my point? My point is that, that I want to give us the best decision possible, excuse me, I want to say that there is so much testimony that could be included in this, that I think that we want to make sure that the decision reflects the best legal position that we have. Now, if you, if you want to go through the comments, fine, I mean, and we can incorporate in them, again, with the understanding that we want to have the best decision that we can to defend our position, that's all.
So my position is, whatever the litigation strategy is, that's a whole another thing. By adding these other concerns in, it, it gets more attention than what John's saying, like, oh, if we just list the document, that, you know.
Well, so, but I think what.
So for instance, let me give you an example, Dr. Lepreys commentary, is, is that not a concern? I mean, is it not a major concern? And my point is, I think there are ten issues, roughly, traffic, all, we put them in with, with no regard to whether some type of strategy. I mean, George can use, can argue that the, the primary one, but we spent all this time on this and then we just put one.
It seems a little like a waste that we've made all of these points.
And again, why wouldn't you want to put?
Well, I, I'm interpreting it as he doesn't want to dilute the main three points that are the least arguable.
From their perspective?
From their perspective, from the HAC standpoint.
I think all of those other things.
And I don't understand legal strategy when it comes to this, but if we're not in a litigation situation yet, does it hurt us to name all of the other points that are super important to all of us? Does it hurt what we're saying to the HAC by listing all the things that we're now being told just really aren't that important and shouldn't be included in this?
Who said they're not important?
I, I think the issue is that. Well, not important enough to make the top three.
Well, but I think because we are, I, I think that we're the, the.
Uh, Susan, yeah, sorry, can I weigh in on that?
Yeah, sure.
I, let, let's, I, I'm sorry, I had to transition to my car, I'm, I'm headed to another meeting, but, you know, I, I drafted this based on what the board told me were the issues. Nobody said anything about Dr. Lapore or anybody else. You said the stormwater management system and the single means of egress and access, and you said your disappointment in the applicant failing to. Considering any revisions, future issues were, nobody said anything about issues that I then unilaterally decided not to include in the decision. And, and I just want to be clear, you shouldn't argue, argue about the substantive points, but don't have an argument about who was late or who was what. Jim is not late in providing comments, they were provided under, this draft and this whole process was provided under a super expedited circumstance. So, so I'm, nobody's accusing Jim of like being late on his comments or anything like that. These are the first time, this is the first time you've had the chance to, to discuss that beyond what you already expressed to me should be included in the decision. So, but, but again, having said that, I, I, you don't have to be a lawyer or, or think about legalese or anything like that to realize that it's simply common sense that if you have a decision that you're seeking to defend, you want to have your real issues of concern in there that you found important and you found compelling justifying denial of this permit. And that was, would be what I would recommend you focus on, that's all I'm saying.
Well, and I think the issue with the, with the traffic is they wouldn't address it. So we never got a peer review that said the traffic is going to be X, Y, or Z, they just said.
But I think that falls under the, I, I think that falls under the egress.
That falls under them not being.
Right, them, them not being responsive and also the, the, the safety and the, the well-being of the people that are going to live there.
So maybe, maybe it's able to be woven into that finding in a way that mentions traffic, but it doesn't become a bullet point, is my point. It's like, it contributes to.
But I, okay, so, but I, I guess my concern is, I don't want, like, I don't want us to rewrite, like, George has crafted the decision in the way that he, without getting into litigation and what we should be doing, what. Yeah, that, how he feels that this is the best defensible decision and I've heard every single person say that we're not litigators, like, so for us to, I don't, I just don't want to second guess him and put ourselves in a worse position.
Susan, that he wrote this decision based on what came up at our last meeting. We didn't bring up the traffic because I think, I think we all had this idea, at least I did, that we would be able to talk about this further than just that one meeting where we gave our opinions and that hasn't happened.
Yeah.
I agree, yeah. So that's what's happening.
Well, and that's why George was saying, you know, he just said, which I understand, he wrote down exactly what our concerns were, the only time we met to talk about this decision. So it's not because, well, and George, you can correct me if I'm wrong, it wasn't, you didn't leave that stuff out necessarily because you thought it was the best way to write the decision, you just had no idea that it was a focus for any of the members of the board to include these other things or one member of the board or whoever. But he would know that they were our concerns because he's been sitting in all through this whole process, so it's not like he was unaware, so he knows what our concerns were all along, but I can see how he took from the last meeting our three big points and because I don't know how to deal with HAC and what's the best way to get them to negotiate or to appeal to them about why we think this is so wrong. And that's where I'm trusting him to go ahead, like he said in the beginning, with three major points that are the least arguable, they're the least opinion-based, he didn't say that, I'm saying that. And so I'm torn between, should we just throw as many of our issues into this first round and?
It isn't a first round though, the decision has to be filed.
And then they'll appeal.
To hack and then they're going to appeal it, most likely.
Right, but then do we have a chance to say anything further?
No.
Oh, so. Except we're in court.
Unless we go to litigation.
Right, which it's probably going to, is what somebody said, I thought.
Right, but so all of the stuff, I guess I thought, like, I, I was looking.
So do we put as much as possible in there?
I think he's already said no, but I was thinking that, when I read it, I didn't go back to George, you know, each of us responded to him with our, whatever our comments were about this. I read it and thought, okay, these are like the three buckets and under those is, is all of the records supporting it. So traffic is not specifically called out, but I thought that because of how the, how traffic was, sort of, came under the umbrella, the same as, you know, the easement that went away and goes under that, the, the safety aspect of wanting that second egress because that helps with traffic flow, it helps with safety, it helps with kids trying to get to school and all of that supporting stuff would be, would be argued out as it's in the record and then with, with the storm.
I mean, would HAC derive that?
They're taking, my, and George.
No, I mean, if, no, if, if you think the traffic, can you hear me? Because I'm, I'm driving, oh, great. No, if you think the traffic is a concern, you, you should note it, we should put it in there. I mean, I, I put in, again, what, what you told me to, and then I also tried to go through the entire record and all the comments and department has, you know, so you see that in the decision, like the planning board comments, the select board, all, all of these boards that commented on it, your traffic, you know, I, I forget his name, but he, yeah, he didn't really recommend further conditions other than kind of up, upping the amount of the mitigation figure.
So. Because it wasn't really well-vetted though, they ignored our concern. And the unwillingness to do another traffic survey, we were working with a seven-year-old survey.
So this, this is a great dialogue because it is kind of cluing you in as to what I'm trying to convey is, no, don't, don't take it, yes, it'll be all on new evidence and the entire record will be available, but if there's an, an issue of importance that you think you want to also emphasize that should be in, that should be in the decision. It, it's just, I did not see an issue above that that was, you know, based on anything. And, and I did, I did raise the one issue of both, because this really goes to the project change and the scientific is a crucial point.
Well, that's a bad point.
We're losing you, George.
This project change. George, can you hear us? Condominium units in these big buildings, that, that is a big season, yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah.
We missed the last minute.
Hello?
We can hear you now, can you hear us?
Yes. This.
We're lo, we're losing you again.
Put in the part, yes, I can hear you, can you hear me?
Yes, now we can.
Let me try to stop, um, hang on, how about now?
Yep.
Can you hear me? Oh, great. All right. So what what my point that I was making was on the issue of traffic. When you're looking at the notice of project change, because remember what you're really focused on is the change in the building type. When it went to the all condominium uh proposal with the big buildings, it obviously is geared more toward a seasonal or it can be argued reasonably that it's geared toward a more seasonal seasonal use that you're going to have a much more intensive use during the summer months than you might have where you have a a mix of single family homes and and a limited amount of townhouse type units. So that element from the traffic consideration, I did put in the decision. But I I sort of, again, like you say, Elise, I've attended all the hearings and I and I tried to add, you know, what I thought was also relevant from the record on the particular issues that were before you on the notice of project change, you know, in addition to what you guys specifically noted to me.
But George, may I just ask you a question?
So I think, yeah, yeah.
During the HAC review of our decision, is it common that they go back into all of our past meetings and re listen to everything and or are they just?
It won't. That will not be done. It the only the only thing that we will.
Opportunity.
Well, the only they, well, remember, it it's not done on a record review. It's it's done on an evidentiary hearing. So what will be done will be there will be submission of exhibits and there'll be the filing of prefiled testimony of anybody who you think supports your decision, expert witnesses or lay witnesses, and all of that comes in. So, yeah, they're not going to go through your record on their own, but they're going to adjudicate everything that we present in in support of your denial decision. So you do want to touch on the points that you think are of importance, but you don't have to. They're neither going to go through the record themselves, but neither do you have to cite everything that came up in the record. You just need to put the reasons for your denial.
Didn't didn't the 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 traffic can be referenced relative to the level, though? Right? More than a thousand, a thousand.
The parking. Yeah.
Well, no, a thousand trips per day.
A thousand trips per day plus the um.
Yeah, or whatever it is.
Can can I describe what I changed? I request this might help.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. This was my letter or email. I just said um. My main comment was to incorporate the points that uh tipping point had outlaid. There were 10 of them. Maybe we don't put all 10 in. I don't, but I think.
This is Durensis's letter?
Yeah, I think it needs to be um. It needs to be have more points than.
So why don't we list out the 10 points?
So I said, the main comment is that my main comment is that there's more than one substantial issue that needs to be flushed out in the decision similar to the PFAS. The attached Durensis letter is a good summary of these issues, which could be dealt with in the same a comprehensive matter as the PFAS. My other was a I wanted to add in the procedural history a note that said, oh, that the and maybe this you guys will disagree with, but the select board decided to um to terminate the appeal.
I thought that was in here.
It was, but I wanted to say without any advance notice to the board and in lieu of the board's objection to the dismissal. But George might have, I I I defer to you on that one, George, because uh it might. That might not be good or that that might not be a normal thing that goes in a decision. And then um. I also wanted to put in reference to the expedited permitting process we went through in two thousand twenty, yeah, two thousand twenty three. I know we all forget that, but I I feel like it it needs to be included because we did. We did go through it painfully. And all I wanted to say was notwithstanding the pending appeal by the other plaintiff parties, because this is right after the town's decision to get out. The applicant elected to proceed at their own risk based on the committee decision and directed the board to issue an expedited preventure permit. That's I mean, that can be changed. Um, that's a little editorial. Premature permit based on that decision. So if remember, we went and had to decide this thing based on the hack decision that was appealed. And the town issued a building permit on X date. That might backfire on us. So I don't know what you guys think about that.
I don't think we should add those. I think that those are those are not part.
Of the procedural history?
No, I think it's just gonna, I think I think we're just, it's just gonna look, it's gonna, what you said before, dilute the, those are.
The message.
Yeah, it's it's editorial. It'll come up.
Well, this is in the procedural history in there, in the in our decision, not not our comment, not our.
But does it matter that? I mean, I mean, I know emotionally for all of us in that is that the select board, you know, dismissed the suit without.
But what does hack care about that?
That's fine.
You're right, but they don't care. Yeah.
Okay.
Billy puts his hand up.
Yeah, that I I didn't. I don't. I don't have anything to say about the hack thing, but I just had the misfortune of sitting through most of those meetings in June because of two thousand twenty three because we had missed some minutes from there. The board did not issue a permit there. The board did a technical review based on HAC's issuance of the permit. So we were not granting a permit there. We issued a letter to the building commissioner sort of outlining areas of concern that the board found during the technical review. But the board did not issue an approval there. It was a it was a letter to the building commissioner.
Can I um add something? Well, um, I'm still.
How'd that go?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I apologize. I I'm just gonna add something because, you know, in case you lose me again is what Jim just said, I just wanted to to say a couple of a few things and and then you can discuss because I think he really summed it up well. Actually, contrary to what some of the board members are saying back to Jim about the history, elaborating a little bit more on the history of like when they sought the building permit and they clear cut and they did stuff like that. You did talk about those issues during deliberations. And I have to say, yes, um, HAC will have little tolerance for that type of, you know, uh, recitation of the history. But I already did put stuff like that in the decision, like that we had objected to this presiding officer and issues like that. So to flesh that out a little bit about procedural history, it might be a good idea to put a little in about the develop, you know, the history in and around when the developer proceeded at risk and then you had this review and then it and all the while knowing that the appeal was pending and was going to be heard by Superior Court and then it came back to you. So I have to say, we do already have some of this editorial comment in the procedural history, and I don't think it would harm you to continue and elaborate on it a little bit more per what Jim just kind of said. Um, and we, you know, I can put that together in a, you know, proposed final draft. And then just two other points, because these were really, I think, the main points of Jim's comments were. I do recommend that you stay away from further um talking about the select board process and not not just because, you know, I have PTSD over that whole thing, but um.
We do, too.
But the, right, um, but the the fact is, you it doesn't. It doesn't do the town any good to sort of be emphasizing to a state committee that the town is fighting amongst itself over these types of issues. And I will further point out, and and I was surprised by it, too, when I found the comment. Select board has weighed in and I put it in the decision. They had questions and concerns about this that they have now expressed to you during this process. So I think it would be counterproductive to sort of emphasize where you may have had a dispute with the select board before. Since now, you know, you've got this denial decision, uh, select board has weighed in. They haven't expressed any disagreement with you over this. And and I don't think that it gives the right message to sort of point out that the board is sort of fighting with everybody about this. So I would recommend maybe not elaborating further than what I put in there on the procedural history. And then just the last point on on the letter that you're referring to about 10 reasons. You know, I think of that show that, you know, the tween show about 10 reasons why I hate you or something like that. You know, I do not agree that you just regurgitate any old reason that was thrown at you in opposition to the project. And I'm not saying anything insulting or disparaging to the comments that you've received and the input that you received from the public during this process. All I'm saying is if you found something particularly compelling in that material, then I would just put that into the decision. But I would recommend against sort of wholesale throwing again against the wall any reason that has ever been presented against this project if that really was not a a true basis for your denial decision. So I hope I hope that makes sense and and that's.
Because I think we want to show that we took in all this information but came back and yeah, like to your point, not everything rose to the point of which a denial would have would would come out of it. It was, you know, a a.
An accumulation.
Accumulation of everything, but I think the water quality was a huge one. And just to your point of mentioning the clear cutting in that timeline, he does mention.
Yep.
The clear cutting in eight F. So maybe having that in the procedural part of how they accelerated this with this, you know.
But I I do think the Dr. Lepre letter, not that the HAC is going to hold him in the high regard that we all do in this community. But do you think that's something that's worth being an attachment or um included somehow? Just to appeal from a standpoint of no one in the community has supported this project. And this is a great example of it from Dr. Lepre. I I mean.
Wouldn't they be filed as testimony?
Yeah, the letter from Durensis is number five, five thirty seven.
With his list.
Well, I think I think if you found something particularly, I think if you found something compelling from it, you should include it in the decision. I don't think you should have attachments like that to the decision because then you'd want to attach the, you know, the expert witness reports from from the Nantucket Land and Water Council. And then you'd end up with just a whole bunch of attachments to your decision. But if you did find, and I apologize about the pronunciation, uh, Dr. Lapore's testimony particularly compelling, I would recommend citing it in the decision in the appropriate place. And any other issue like that that you find compelling. Otherwise, I would not just wholesale incorporate everything that came in in opposition.
And that's how I'm suggesting that we just attach this. I thought it was a good summary that we to have this dialogue, really, you know, because we own, we talked about.
We didn't have any dialogue.
What was on our plate right before we closed the hearing. But let's not forget about some of this stuff. There there are still outstanding fire things that we need to discuss. We never got and that I don't know if we asked for an extension for that. I personally think we do.
I think we said we they weren't going to grant us an extension, but George had said that if that comes in, then we could um file a motion to reopen the hearing. I have a note somewhere, but reopen the hearing for that specific to to take in.
Yeah, and and with regard to with regard to evidentiary issues such as reports coming in after the public hearing, that one I would recommend you uh assuming this does get appealed, I would recommend a meeting sooner rather than later in executive session so I can update you as to you know, the status of documents and let's just leave it there, uh, the status of documents or what what evidence may or may not be compelling to support your denial. Because again, remember, it's all a de novo review, so you can get anything you want in to the hearing, even if it's not part of your decision. But I I would recommend that type of discussion take place in executive session when and if further litigation is filed.
Okay.
My concern is that things are being delayed until.
Okay.
I think I would prefer we ask for an extension until we get it, but.
But we already did and they.
They're not being delayed. I don't mind telling you that in open session. Nothing is being delayed. I I think I would recommend again, you have a discussion in executive session if litigation is filed. And I can update you as to the status of everything that I've I've seen outside of your public hearing.
Okay, let's go back to to your notes, Jim. If you, did you have more to add?
And I'm not, not that I'm looking at this from a litigation strategy. Remember, there's another, there's another court that's ruled on this. You know, while our arguments might not fly at hack because we know where they're coming from, I wouldn't be surprised if they were challenged again to a another court that seems to understand it. And that and that's why I feel like more of these should be added, but I'm not talking about it from a litigation side.
I I should note just on litigation, then I'm going to go off camera again and and drive. But um I take into account not you you're. I I'm not going to say anything about the fairness or unfairness that you may or may not receive at HAC. I'm not going to make a comment about that in public. But what I will say is that there is no trial lawyer would ever disagree with me that a litigant wants to focus on a a number of of a small number of compelling themes so that their message is not lost in translation by a million different issues all over the map. So anyone who has tried a case will agree with me about that theory. And the other thing I would tell you about litigation is I don't make recommendations to you, and I never have, regardless of what happened before when the select board had had you dismiss the lawsuit. I've never made recommendations to the board with only a view of how the HAC may or may not rule on something. I'm always looking at it from good faith, compelling arguments that if they do not prevail at HAC, they would prevail at Superior Court. And even if they didn't prevail at Superior Court, they could potentially prevail at the Massachusetts Appeals Court or the Supreme Judicial Court. So that that's the perspective that we bring. And again, I would just focus it on, in your good faith, what do you think the the compelling issues are? And that is how we'll litigate it. But but the general principle still pertains that you do not want to take an approach where you're just throwing everything against the wall. You you want to focus on the compelling issues that support your decision.
I got you. Um, thank you. And I just asked the board, so I basically wanted to incorporate or flush those out more that you look at that letter. I'm not supporting that letter, but to to deliberate on this. So, you know, if we have, and that was, you know, it didn't make the draft, but you would have, if he incorporated, we would be talking about it in this way. So so uh just take a look at that and think and think if our decision reflects all those things in some way, shape or form. That's that. That was my point. And then um.
And none of those points were even that mentioned in this.
Not to the extent, but that's fine if you, I mean, that's just my opinion. So my view, I I think I, my view is we're to look at local concerns and taking out the litigation thing. We, to me, the kitchen sink sink approach is better than the other. But um, you know, if we were viewing this as if we weren't even going to get challenged, I would think we would include it. Or let's not not include it because we think that.
Right.
Yeah.
I I mean, I think I think what came out of this was the thing that rose to the top was the water quality. I mean, that was the thing that really kind of hit home. And the um uh the limited access to the site and and the site and then into the site, you know, it's the one, it's one road to the site and then one road into that site and the lack of parking, which was brought up. So I sort of feel like, I mean, I've, look, as I said to Billy, it's like, I don't know how to read a decision. I don't, you know, I can only offer, you know, a few points. But I don't, I mean, I think it's nice and concise, which I think is kind of good. It's like, you know, we didn't really have to pay much attention to any of the other white noise because there was so much in this one thing.
And they're not opinion based.
No, there's.
They they, I think he focused with the three points, although I totally get what you're saying, Jim. I mean, if it were up to me, I'd list a hundred things.
Right.
But, you know, it would start being this one's opinion and that one's opinion, which we just know won't hold up and doesn't make a difference anyway, which is a little.
Oh, sorry, a little painful since we sat through so many months of this and heard every single person's input and every single technical. single person's input and every single technical reason why this should not happen and.
And that's great that that's all on the record.
Yeah, it's all on the record, but to have to narrow all that down into a decision can't be easy. But I think the way it is worded so far is the least appealable, the least arguable, the least opinion based. I think the the most fact based points. But I'm also not going to, you know, argue if you want to put in.
No, I.
10 point things that we all have witnessed and heard that are also very good reasons for this project not to continue, but will they be disregarded as opinion and not, you know, base and baseless points? So.
I'm fine.
I didn't want it to. Yeah, I mean, I think also, if you list everything, is it, you know, well, they were clearly against us from the beginning, you know, does this make it look like we actually heard all the testimony, we deliberated, these are the things that really rose to the top rather than, we don't want this to happen, so we're going to list traffic, you know, blah, 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 like, you know, whatever. These are substantial questions. Yeah, I mean, the water quality is huge.
Numbers, it's fact based, these are fact based reasons.
And we have, you know, in the after the decision is the Exhibit A, which is the record on the notice of project change. So it includes references to the stormwater handbook, to the emails from Paul Durantis, letters from Tim Lepre, like, all of these things that we're that back up the decision are referenced and therefore becoming a part of it. So I, you know, I read the decision when it came out with the draft and I thought that this had it just felt it it didn't feel emotional. It felt this was fact based, that the stormwater and and really, you know, what we've talked about, the health, safety and welfare of the community that's going to be living here in this project, the neighbors, and then the general community at large. So instead of just this, you know, it's it's, you know, I think I think it's our, I think it's a very, I think this is our strongest. And I and I I think all the things that Durantis said and the things that you referenced, Jim, I Jim, I do believe are are they're they all bolster what we got to. Okay, so what what do we want to do? We we have a tentative meeting scheduled on Monday to approve?
I'm out of town. I got to sign the decision today because I'm leaving.
Okay, so then it looks like we need to vote.
John literally just disappeared up there. Hang on.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I could I could get on to Zoom, but I would want to sign something today, just trusted you guys.
Well, then I guess then the question becomes, are there substantive changes that we want to address or do are we? I'm he I think I'm hearing, I think I'm hearing from four members that perhaps the bulk of the decision is okay with and but we're okay with some massaging of the procedural history.
I don't feel right approving it, Jim. We've gotten to this point finally, but Jim is uncomfortable with the way it's written. I want to honor that, too. I don't want to go.
I mean, I speaking for myself, I'd like a further chance to just ruminate on this, but I understand your your points. I'm not pushing it, but I.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
Um, can Lisa zoom in Monday? Because you could always vote a final and then like authorize it to be signed by the chair as opposed to having everybody sign.
What time would it be?
The meeting's at 1:00 on Monday and it's obviously in hybrid format.
Can we keep it short?
We only have the room till 3:00 on Monday because I was planning board at 4:00.
Monday?
I don't foresee any big issues.
1:00.
I just want another re.
No, that's fine.
Yeah.
I mean, I spent a lot of time on.
I could do that. I'll just I'll just.
Okay, so Monday, we have Monday one here.
Yeah. In a hybrid, you sent me the.
Monday at 1:00 in this room and obviously on Zoom, yes.
Yeah, the the only problem is you might want to kill me, but I have to be in court tomorrow and I might not be able to get this back out to you tomorrow. But if I can get it to you first thing Monday morning with the changes that you've discussed, would would that work for you guys to be able to see it?
I mean, I don't think.
You're going to send your changes, Jim.
I have I have Jim's.
I don't even know if I'm going to make changes, but now I know I don't need a redraft. I know what's being incorporated and I can just, you know, re re look at this to see.
Okay, so you're not asking him to add more than what we already discussed, which is more procedural stuff and things like that?
Yeah.
And you just want to.
Is that that?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so.
And let me let me, I mean, I'm I'm I take this very seriously, not that anyone isn't. And I want to make sure that we have a really good decision. That's that's where I'm coming from. I'm not, it's not like I'm I really have it out for them and I want to make sure I just.
I I think that.
So just can I?
Fulfill my role as a.
I I think I would I would feel more comfortable if the board, the whole board, including Jim, feels more comfortable about what they're approving and signing as a decision. So if we think that we can do that, I I can guarantee you, I can have the decision back to you first thing Monday morning, and then you get a chance to see it again and even have another brief discussion about it if you want. And and then, you know, we we did our best to make sure that everybody's as happy as they can be about what it is that they approved for the final decision. So I'd recommend we really give that a shot if if you guys can do it.
Can any hi any edits be highlighted so I don't have to like go through like inspect so trying to figure out what was edited or changed?
Yes, I will provide it and track change. Yes.
And you have you'll have time to file on Monday, so we make our deadline.
Well, that is, who do we file with it? Are we filing with?
I filed decisions with the town clerk, correct?
And they close at.
4:00.
They are last filing, they take it 3:35.
Okay.
I believe, same as the registry of deeds.
Yeah, so what I if the board agrees, what I'll do is I'll also amend the signature page to have it that the board authorized the chair to sign. Is that does that make sense? And then that way.
Yeah, since two people won't be here, sure, yeah.
Yeah, Susan, you'll just sign it and then Billy will rush it to the town clerk's office and I can email it out if I need to to HAC or whatever, I'll review the order. And I will provide it in, I will provide you a tracked change version and I will provide the fresh version in PDF.
Okay.
And let me just say, if the other if the members you want to prove it as is, I'm fine with, I mean, I'm not offended by you, the rest of the board.
I mean, we've lost John anyway.
I don't want to cause, I don't want to create some big problem for you all.
It's not a big problem.
Because.
For me at all.
Yeah.
You know, if you kept something or add something that's significant.
Yeah.
Do it without the time.
Not really, but.
Not really, but yeah.
We have Monday at 3:45.
They didn't give us the time, actually.
Okay, okay, so so let's continue till Monday morning, I mean, Monday morning, Monday afternoon at 1:00 PM.
Let's just say Monday at 1:00, 1:00 PM.
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Can I have one thing related related to this decision? I think it's important that once we make this decision that we communicate via letter maybe from the board saying, no, we don't want any other town entity to go around during this process without our knowledge, whether it's deciding whether to litigate it or not litigate it. I'm not saying.
You just want to be involved in the conversation.
I'm not saying it's enforceable and they if they, for instance, if the select board still feels they're they have that power, which I guess they do, it still lets them know like, hey, which we want to know beforehand, we want to be in this conversation or anything else related to it.
Since it has been put on us.
As this goes through, if it's appealed, if it's denied.
I completely agree.
Yeah, I mean, I do, too. I mean, we sat, you know, the two of us have been sitting on this in 2018.
Yeah, I can't even imagine.
To have that other decision negotiated out from under the litigation negotiated out from under us without any discussion with us was really.
I mean, what you just said is separate from what this decision is.
Even besides that, I think.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We know some other things that have been going on outside of our.
I think that's very reasonable.
Including including our council. I'm sure George agrees.
Yeah, can I? Can you hear me still?
Yes.
Oh, great, yeah. You can issue whatever letter you think is appropriate. I can tell you if there is HAC litigation that's filed, which I mean, the applicant had said clearly that they were going to file it, so we we don't have to speculate about that. When that litigation is filed, my intent was to formally request of the select board that you have a joint executive session, so select board and zoning board of appeals and discuss it while, you know, that when when that appeal is filed, have an early discussion to talk at least at that stage as to what the strategy is going to be and, you know, everything that you want to talk about, I'm going to I'm going to request that from the select board and I can't imagine that they would deny that request. And so that would be what I would recommend. And I don't mean a I don't mean a representative, I mean a full, you know, noticed executive session jointly zoning board of appeals and select board. So I I will make that request to them. In fact, I'll send a follow up email in the meantime.
I don't want to do that because.
No, but that's the kind of input that we need from you, I think.
What should also be included in that is other boards, because we've, you know, and and all all I'm trying to do is establish this is our, it's a 40B process, we're in the 40B, we are the board. There are other boards that have an interest in this and they've they're kind of working their way around and town staff as well. So that's how I feel.
Okay, so motion to continue this discussion to Monday at 1:00 PM. Can I get a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, so Alisa?
Yes.
I mean, sorry.
Aye.
Lisa, sorry.
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
And myself, I and John is not, he had a.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second. So all those in favor to adjourn?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that's four, we're out. Okay. His teacher was texting me like, is Jeffrey going home with someone else? I'm like, oh, yes, I forgot to tell you. Sorry.
Well, Lisa was.